allegiance to the flag.
America. Public and one nation. Justice for all.
Pursuant to section five, chapter two thirty-one of the public laws of New Jersey, this is to state for the record that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the public by posting and maintaining the annual notice of regular meetings on the bulletin board of the municipal building, by mailing the annual notice of regular meetings for 2022 to the news record and store ledger in December 2021, and by filing said notice in the office of the township clerk.
Adams.
Here.
Mr. Kreip.
Here.
Mr. DeLuca.
I'm here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Mayor Daffis.
Here.
Whereas chapter two thirty-one public laws in nineteen seventy-five, commonly known as the open public meetings act, requires women's public bodies be open to the public. And whereas section seven eight provides that the governing body has the discretion to permit, prohibit, or regulate the active participation of the public at any meeting. And whereas czars of the governing body to comply with the provision of this act, same time to conduct its business in an orderly and expeditious manner, now therefore be resolved by the township committee, township of Maplewood does hereby prohibit, except to set forth in the formal agenda, active participation and deliberations of the governing body by the public, except as otherwise described by law, does limit the public to the observations of the actions and discussions of the governing body at all its regular and special meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Adams.
Yes.
Stripe.
Yes.
Mr. DeLuca.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mayor Daffis.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Fritz, and welcome to our special meeting of the township committee this evening, friends and neighbors. This is a historic occasion for us and for New Jersey. With this meeting tonight, as we adopt the three resolutions that have been published before us on this agenda, we will make our fire consolidation a reality, and it will be official as of tomorrow, July first, twenty twenty-two. I'm going to allow my colleagues who have been part of the negotiating, the working group on this for a very long time, Deputy Mayor DeLuca and committee member McGee to make some remarks as they wish, but before that, I wish to make my remarks, which essentially are going to be about summarizing the resolutions before us this evening, and that will lead us into an opportunity for the public, members of the public, to ask questions and interact with us about these resolutions. So we have resolution number two thirty, two thirty-one, and two thirty-two. The resolutions allow us to amend the previously adopted shared service agreement between the two towns, most notably to reflect the following changes. Number one, civil service, the parties have come to an agreement, including the local and state union, for civil service, and we've received the necessary waivers from civil service to allow all personnel from both towns to enter the new entity, the new entity called South Essex Fire Department, the S E F D, with their current ranks and titles, not subject to any new lists or any changes in their promotions. Also, to reflect that the headquarters of the S E F D will be in South Orange, of course, Maplewood will retain its firehouses two and three. Also, to reflect that the chief executive officer of the new entity, the S E F D, will be outgoing South Orange Township Administrator, Mr. Adam Loner. Also, to reflect that Maplewood will continue providing emergency medical services, EMS, as Maplewood has been providing, the cost and expenses of such not to be included in the operational costs or expenditures of the S F S E F D, excuse me. The S E F D will, however, provide for EMS billing to Maplewood, as is required by state regulation. I should mention with respect to all personnel-related matters, as we transition into civil service, the state of New Jersey, namely, the Department of Community Affairs, the Division of Local Government Services, has agreed to working across state agencies in expediting and making sure that all necessary employee-related matters are taken care of for all of our personnel in Maplewood and in South Orange, namely pension, all employee benefits, healthcare, and social security, obviously, social security is a federal agency requiring their support. Some of that is going to take some time. It's not going to delay our being online, fully operational as a new entity tomorrow, July first. It will only mean that for a few more months in this year, our respective, that the personnel will be paid, they will remain on payroll of their respective townships. That's all that means. Again, also, we have two resolutions here beyond just the amendment to the to the agreement itself, one resolution reflecting that our awesome employee, our administrative assistant of Maplewood FD, Dawn Ross, will transition into being the administrative person for the S E F D, and will work at headquarters over at S E F D headquarters, South Orange Village Hall. Also, to reflect another resolution, fire inspection personnel, Chief Sullivan will remain fire inspection personnel for South Orange, and our civilian fire inspection personnel, Mr. Bob Conklin, will remain in Maplewood, under the new S E F D entity. As I mentioned, before I turn it over to Deputy Mayor DeLuca and committee member McGee to add any other parts of this, tomorrow, yes, excuse me, someone is noting that I said tomorrow is not July first, Friday is July first, I'm getting ahead of myself, thank you, not tomorrow, Thursday, June thirtieth, but Friday, July first, my apologies there, I'm a little excited. Anyway, as I mentioned, this is historic for the state of New Jersey and shared services. This has never been done before like this, combining two departments so very different. So this is truly a historic moment. It took a lot of work, and we hope and we think that it will inspire other consolidation and certainly regionalization of our fire departments. Also, we want to reflect, I also want to mention that this consolidation will not only make us safer, both in Maplewood and South Orange, in terms of increased staffing in any rotation responding to any incident, it will also provide necessary tax relief to both of our taxpayers in Maplewood and South Orange. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Mayor DeLuca, and then to committee member McGee.
Thank you, Mayor.
Feel free to correct the record anywhere where I have misspoken.
Okay. So it is a historic occasion. This is the first time that two independent fire departments are merging. The Hudson Fire Department that merged was a number of fire departments and still is still is merging. Hamilton Department was a partially paid and volunteer operation, and this is the first time in the state that two, again, two independent paid fire departments are merging in it, and the benefit primarily will be that we will have more fire personnel on the scene quicker, and they will be able to deal with emergencies and fires in a much more organized fashion than we have now under mutual aid or even automatic aid. So this is a unified command, it looks at the totality of the apparatus that we have and the materials and the firefighting equipment that we have, and makes the deployment a lot better and a lot smoother. So again, it's just a historic day in both of our communities. I have been negotiating this for a very long time. I started with three village presidents ago. Doug Newman was the village president, and we, what's ironic is when I see Doug, he says that he wasn't sure we would we would be where we are now. At the time, we were talking about a joint meeting, and it was very difficult. This was, this was nearly fifteen years ago, and it really wasn't what we wanted to do. And so it, we couldn't move it forward, we had just merged the courts, and we thought we could do this too, but we just weren't able to move it forward. The next person that succeeded, Doug, was really not interested in merging, and so I thought, you know, we were going to walk away from this, it was never going to happen. And then when Sheena Column came in, she called me and said, let's, let's talk, and we revived it, and it's been a tough few years in putting this together, but we're we're there. And so I just want to thank everybody and thank the current members of the township committee and past members of the township committee. We've been consistent in our desire and our goal of doing this, and in addition to, you know, fighting fires and keeping our firefighters safer, we believe it will save money, because we are reducing management through the consolidation. We're bringing seventy-six firefighters in both towns down to seventy-one, that's by reducing one fire chief and four deputy chiefs. We don't need that level of management with this operation. So again, as the mayor said, no firehouse is being closed, no fire truck or fire engine is being taken off the road. We are coordinating it, we will continue to provide emergency medical services in Maplewood, we will continue to do other services. I did want to just correct a couple things. We, the inspection is not a resolution we will be dealing with tonight, we pulled that off because each town is going to continue to do their inspection services, so we realize we don't need to do a resolution because it's maintenance of effort. The, the, as you might imagine, we've moved a lot of pieces of bureaucracy in Trenton, and some of the reason why we're continuing to keep people on the individual town payrolls is because the bureaucracy is tough to catch up, we're also dealing with social security, which is a federal bureaucracy, so some of this is is temporary until the beginning of the year when we can really bring everybody on the fire department onto the fire department payroll. Civilians might be longer because of the social security issue, but that's the goal. We're continuing to move forward, continuing to bring, to make S E F D the employer, so that the towns won't have to do it. We're still going to be operating on January, on July first as a unified fire department. It's just going to be administratively, the back office will be pretty much what it is now, but on the, as far as the fire department, we will be providing fire services as the South Essex Fire Department. That's it. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, committee member McGee.
Thank you, Mayor Daffis, and Mr. Luca touched on several points, I think, which are very relevant to those who want to get into the guts of what we've worked on for, for me, five and a half years, but to the, to the public, to the community, to the front end, it will be seamless, and that's the most important thing. So just remember that. And I do have some short remarks. July first will be a historic day in the township of Maplewood, the village of South Orange, the county of Essex, as well as the state of New Jersey, the foundation of any municipality's services, police, public works, health, and fire. These are the pillars of our operations, and these pillars come with significant costs, which are felt by all of us in the community. Number one priority is for us as a municipality to provide a high level of service to our community while maintaining the appropriate level of fiscal investment, resulting in a premium quality of life and services for our towns. Finally, after five and a half years, and even a longer period for my colleague, Mr. DeLuca, we have come to the moment of realizing this goal. This merger aligns exactly with that aim which I just articulated previously. The services which we will provide to the broader community will remain at a high level, while at the same time provide amazing synergies. There are many people to thank tonight for getting us to this moment, so please allow me to name a few, and my apologies to anyone who I've missed. First, I would like to thank our South Orange partners, especially Village President Sheena Column, for her unwavering dedication efforts. I want to thank my colleague, Vic DeLuca, who put me on the merger committee on day one of my first term, and we've been running ever since. Trust me, we have seen it all. To my TC colleagues, past and present, thank you for hanging in there, for listening to our debriefs, understanding our frustrations, and always supporting us as we went step by step as we move forward. To Adam Lerner, who took a tremendous degree of work to get us over this finish line. To our attorneys, Roger Desiderio, Clyde Otis, and Steve Rother, for their countless hours of energy and effort. I also want to thank the Manitou team, Mr. Jennings and team, for their thoughtful report. And our governors, czars, who are also there in times of need. Thank you to our fire chiefs, past and present, for their energy and efforts, Dingelstadt, Weber, Alvarez, and Sullivan. I want to thank the leadership of the FMBA, Kevin Herbert and Mr. Jennings. Thank you to Lieutenant Governor Sheila Oliver and the DCA for their efforts and collaborative assistance with this very complicated agreement. In the end, this agreement is progress, a blueprint that shows the power of collaborative efforts at multiple government levels, across multiple entities and departments, that that can lead to great success and also advancements in government. Tonight, I profoundly say, together we will move forward. Thank you, and thank you, Mayor.
Beautiful statement, Mr. McGee, thank you so much, and you're right, this can be done, and it should be done more and more, and I think we're going to be a model for the entire state. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you, Deputy Mayor DeLuca, for your leadership and your vision. You were talking about this during different times, before we had shared services czars, and before, you know, at the time when you were talking about this, it was falling on deaf ears. And as committee member McGee noted, we must salute in a very big way, South Orange Village President Sheena Column. She has been not only unwavering unwavering in her commitment, she has been a master negotiator, despite all of the challenges that, and the personal attacks that she has navigated. Still, she resisted, she persisted, and she's gotten us to this point. It has been, as you said, Mr. McGee, a very complicated, multi-layered negotiation, so we're very, very excited. I want to offer committee member Adams and committee member Kreip an opportunity to offer their remarks or ask any questions.
Sure, I just want to thank Mr. DeLuca, Mr. McGee for, I know it's been a lot of meetings, a lot of hours, a lot of work, and I know that you've been working on this for quite a long time, good thing you're still on the township committee, so you could see it through. But yeah, and thanks, I was skeptical when we were first doing this, and you know, a year into my first term, and my bottom line was to be able to provide the service that our residents expect, but also to save money, otherwise, I saw no reason to do it. So I'm glad that that worked out, and you know, you guys were able to make that happen. And and I also want to give a shout out to President Column because she's, you know, she not only went through this just in all the meetings with FMBA and all the, you know, the back and forth and negotiation, but she also got challenged in the election for this. So you know, it was, it was, it was a heavy lift, so really, really appreciate your dedication and your work, and let's make history.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Committee member Kreip.
I just wanted to send a big congratulations to everyone who spent the last several years working towards this endeavor, which is record-breaking and just, it's a beautiful thing, and like committee woman Adams stated, the fact that we're not only improving services available for our residents, but we're also doing it at a lower cost, that stewardship, and I love it. So thank you for all the work you put into it, and looking forward to see great things happen.
Great things are happening, thank you, committee member Kreip. This is what good government should look like and and do, so we're really all very excited. At this point, unless there are any other, I don't know if Township Administration has any thoughts they want to offer, and or legal, Mr. Jimes.
I would just say, you know, congratulations to all those involved. Clearly, you've been working very hard at this for, in Mr. DeLuca's case, a decade, and it was a great policy accomplishment that you should all be proud of, and I look forward to providing any assistance that I can and my office can to the S E F D and Mr. Loner, who I have a great working relationship in the years to come for as long as he serves in that position.
Thank you, Mr. Jimes. Mr. Desiderio, I'm going to offer you the opportunity as well, anything?
I thank you, Mayor, now I just would want to thank everybody for their hard work. I was up close with it, and I agree, all of the people involved worked very hard, was not an easy process, and we'll move forward as of July one with the S E F D, so best luck to all of us.
Thank you, Mr. Desiderio, July one, not tomorrow, June thirtieth, July one on Friday. So with that, let's have some public comment. I know we have members of the public, and we already have a question, I'm going to read it out loud, it's in the chat, you may have seen it already, just want to indicate it in the record, will Maplewood fire personnel, this is coming from Joan Crystal, welcome, Joan, thanks for being here tonight, your question is, will Maplewood fire personnel have equal promotion rights to those of South Orange fire personnel and retain seniority reflecting their date of entry into the new entity? Who would like to take that question?
Yes, the answer is yes.
The answer is yes, yes, resoundingly yes, and that is something that I covered in my summary in the beginning. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the township committee about this? Mr. Waltz.
Evening, Mayor, I see Joan Crystal has raised her hand, so we'll convert her to a panelist in our three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, do we think it's another question or the same question?
I think. Here she comes.
The same question, but she's here, so.
Okay.
Crystal can let us know. Ms. Crystal, can you see us and hear us?
It's the same question. As a retired civil service examiner with forty-three years of experience in another jurisdiction, I'm very concerned about the state of New Jersey having civil service law that would permit someone who is a non-civil service employee not just to enter a civil service agency with civil service status, but to have the same seniority rights and the same promotion rights. That would come under different legislation, and I really don't want to see our Maplewood firefighters disadvantaged through this merger because they did not have civil service status prior to the creation of this new regional organization.
Ms. Crystal, with all due respect, that's not the case, I'm sorry, so we've negotiated, and they will have equal footing in this merger, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Crystal, and good to see you, and I'm glad you're feeling better. Any other members of the public who wish to address the township committee?
See no one, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Waltz, so that.
Mayor, I do want to bring up one point, so that we're transparent with everyone here, both on the TC and the public. Right now, we have a significant vacancy pool in both departments, and we're, we're in the process right now of working through a hiring process to bring us up to date so that we can get new firefighters in the academy by July eleventh. But it is, it is really hurting us as far as overtime and also just staffing, we just can't keep working these folks. So we are going to have in July, and into somewhat in August because of vacations and what have you, we're probably going to be at the lower end of our shift, and our shift will be between seventeen firefighters maximum, and the minimum will be fourteen. And that reflects the current maximum and minimum we have now with two departments. When we're at fourteen, we have been advised by the chiefs, both Chief Alvarez and Chief Sullivan, that it will be best practice to take the ambulance out of service in Maplewood, so that our firefighters, our fourteen firefighters, when we're at that level, will focus on emergencies and fires. If we're at fifteen, if we're at sixteen, or at seventeen, that Maplewood ambulance will run, but when we get to fourteen, it becomes a problem to take two firefighters off firefighting duty to put on the ambulance. When we are at fourteen, we will take the ambulance out of service, and EMS service in Maplewood will be provided by St. Barnabas on a weekday basis from six AM to six PM, and in the evening and on weekends by the South Orange Rescue Squad. Right now, they serve as backup for us, but during this situation where we will be at minimum, they will become the primary, and we will take our ambulance out of service. People, as Mr. McGee said, that's, you know, on the front end, they will still get service, they will, we will be responding to any calls we get, but it will be from either the South Orange Rescue Squad, which does a number of our calls already, or St. Barnabas ambulance. Chief Alvarez has also said that any emergency which is life-threatening, so it's cardiac arrest, someone not being able to breathe, he will dispatch fire trucks, fire engines with EMT members on there to provide service, so we will continue to do that, we just won't be running the ambulance. So transport will either be by South Orange Rescue or St. Barnabas, but if there is a crisis, we will send our EMTs with a fire truck to that home or to that location to be able to deal with that crisis.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor DeLuca, for that detail. Okay, we are closing our public comment period, and here we go, we're going to adopt these resolutions one by one. Ms. Fritz, resolution two thirty dash twenty-two?
Yes, Mayor, by title, resolution authorizing a first amendment of the Fire Services Regional Service Agency Agreement with Maplewood Township regarding the South Essex Fire Department.
May I get a motion?
I move it.
I'll second it. Roll call.
Adams.
Yes.
Stripe.
Yes.
Mr. DeLuca.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mayor Daffis.
Yes, resolution number two thirty-one dash twenty-two.
Yes, Mayor, also by title, resolution authorizing the execution of a shared service agreement between the Township of Maplewood and the South Essex Fire Department for the services of Dawn Ross.
Mr. Mayor, I will move the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Yes. Stripe.
Yes.
Mr. DeLuca.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes, and thank you, Ms. Ross.
Mayor Daffis.
Yes, resolution number two thirty-two dash twenty-two.
Yes, Mayor, also by title, resolution authorizing the execution of a shared service agreement between the Township of South Orange Village, Township of Maplewood, and the South Essex Fire Department for fire protection services.
I move it, I move the adoption of resolution two thirty-two.
A second.
Ms. Adams.
Yes.
Ms. Kreip.
Yes.
Mr. DeLuca.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mayor Daffis.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Fritz, and thank you, everyone, congratulations, we did it. And with that. And with that, I move that we adjourn and.
It was like lightning.
All, all say aye by acclamation.
Aye, aye.